This conference will now be recorded.
We can get going. Hopefully we'll have, oh, there's Katie, Katie Barker. Good. Right, why don't we get started?
Okay, let's get started then. And we don't have a secretary here at the moment. Oh, no.
Nope, still not.
Nope, we don't. No, we don't. So I guess I'll just keep notes then for now. And let me just see what. So we're calling to order at 7:02. And are there any additions to the agenda that anybody wants to add to the agenda? That's why we call it an addition to the agenda. Does anybody want to do that? No, they don't. All right, that's wonderful. And let's move on. Review and accept the minutes of the April 19th, 2021. Hopefully, everybody had a chance to take a look at the minutes that were set, sent out. Does anybody have any additions, deletions, corrections that need to be made for the minutes of April's meeting? I'm seeing nodding heads going, no. So that means, all right, I got a motion to accept the minutes as we receive them.
I'm motioning.
Amanda motioned, and Dick seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, you know what, I'm going to just relocate real quickly upstairs because my dogs are going to go bananas, and I'll be right with you guys. Hold on one second, if you don't mind, because I didn't think anybody was coming home, and they did.
What is that?
It's drum practice.
Oh, was that, is that Dix? Is that, is that, I heard that the other day when we were talking on the porch.
Yeah, our clock is noisy.
That's good.
Yeah, I wondered, I didn't hear that.
All right, while Dan is relocating, I'm going to pull up the treasures reports. Hello, Rachel. Hello, Shannon. Good to see you both.
Hi, Shannon.
Hello.
Melanie, you want to do the treasures report?
Maybe we lost Melanie.
We lost Melanie. All right, well, let's move on. We'll come back to the treasures report if we're able to. Aren't you glad you recorded this, Joe? Compelling video to watch. All right, let's see. How about the directors' report? You're there.
Sure. Okay, good. So hope everybody had a nice weekend. It is some kind of day out there, I think. So the, we'll start with the circulation. The April circulation, our April circulation was our highest in 14 months. It's nice to see that progress, which has basically been linear with a couple of little, couple of little bumps or valleys here and there. Okay, Melanie is texting to say, I'm sorry, but I lost you. I'm going to try to get back in. Well, hopefully she'll get back in. So it's nice to see that, that, that increase as we open up. And hopefully, you know, I would have thought that we would have been that the progress would be coming faster, but the progress is coming. So, and we're seeing it every month, nearly every month, there's, there's an increase. So that's a good thing. Speaking of opening up, we have done several things over the past couple of weeks to have a more open posture in the light of decreasing restrictions and decreasing COVID rates. We've ended our quarantine. So for the first time in, in a year, we're not quarantining materials as they come back. This increases the rate of circulation, and nearly every library is doing it. There's one library, Gilderland, that is still quarantining for, I think, unrelated reasons. We are bringing back life programs. So we recently had our first in-person ukulele jam out in the gazebo, which is a lot of fun. And tomorrow, tomorrow morning, tomorrow morning, we are bringing back storytime. So this is, this is a big deal. We've been working on this, practicing for this for a couple of weeks now, and is ready to go. We've bought a PA system, a small PA system, to help us contend with traffic noises out in the park. We have six kids signed up so far. We'll see whether we get them, or whether we get others. We're asking people to register for the first time. Never asked people to do that before. So, you know, we may get others who just, you know, anticipate just walking in. And that's fine, too. Everybody is going to sign in for contact tracing purposes. We'll see how it goes. We'll see how it goes. I'm very excited. So.
What stories are on the docket?
I don't know. That's, that's not my bag.
What do you don't know?
I don't, I don't know the stories. It, it's a spring theme. It's a spring theme. This is Anne's. I'm, I'm not, I'm not micromanaging this. I'm micromanaging other things, not micromanaging that.
All right.
I don't know if we're registered, but we're planning on going. So if we're not registered.
Okay, yeah, so we saw that you were, that you were interested in the Facebook event. So good to know, good to know. I very much look forward to seeing Taran. Cool. That's going to go forward every Tuesday out in the park. When we can't do it out in the park, we'll do it on the patio. And when weather intervenes, then we're just going to have to put it off until the next week. Summer program, summer reading program is coming together nicely. We've got a theme, we've got a number of activities planned, a couple of guests coming in. And that's all coming together pretty nicely. We've also are introducing a new program into our summer reading program that Katie Barker and I and Katie Meckham over at the school have been working pretty hard on. And this was born from an idea of Deborah's. And we're calling it the Summer Reading Buddies Program. We are pairing kids who are in particular need of some additional reading assistance at Elton Mount Elementary School with a, a tutor from the high school. We've got a list of recommended kids. The two trustee kids are on there, are on that list as possible, possible tutors. And so over the next couple of weeks, we're going to be reaching out to tutors to see if they would be interested and willing to take on this, this assignment, this volunteer assignment. And they're gonna, we're gonna pair the high school students with the, the students who have just finished either first or second grade. And they're going to do literacy activities once a week. They are going to play literacy games. They are going to do literacy strengthening activities together here at the library. And the hope is that those kids that we are able to help through this program are going to be a little bit more caught up when they get back to school in September. Obviously, the pandemic has been extremely disruptive on a number of axes. And literacy education in the school has been a major one of those where the reading teachers just haven't been able to get in as much as they would be able to and normally. And the kinds of interventions that they would normally have been able to have employed with, with some of these kids just haven't been there, unfortunately. So really excited about that. And like I said, a couple of you, watch your, watch your mailboxes because you might be getting a letter from us. We've been able to do all these opening up kinds of activities in part because of, as I said, the declining COVID rate, which we've been judging for the past year as a function of the seven-day average, Albany County positive COVID test rate. But as I mentioned in the director's report, there is some reason, we may have some reason to want to look beyond that metric as we think about gauging the, the public health situation. And so I wanted to put it out there to, to the board to see if somebody would be willing to take on looking at what, what other metrics we might want to be taking a look at. The one that I recommended within the director's report is the new cases per 100,000 population. That might be a good one. There might be others. So is there anybody who would be interested in making a recommendation to the next board meeting about what we should be looking at in terms of public health metrics? Anybody with a science-inflected background? Yes, there we go. Thank you.
Public health thing, yeah, I can, I can look into that.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. So, so we'll talk about that later this week. But, and we might want to stick with what we've got, what we've been using. Or maybe not. We'll see. Thank you for taking that on, Shannon. Everybody should know at this point.
Before we move on, just a quick question. Are other libraries leaning to a different metric that I?
There, yeah, there's been a lot of discussion about this amongst directors. Some people are sticking with the, the positive COVID rate. Some people have switched from the seven-day average to the 14-day average. Others have abandoned the, that, that metric altogether. Most of us started there. Not all of us are there now. So.
One of the things that I can. We had a call this week about the mask. What, what's their preference?
Yeah, I'm sure they've got lots of strong preferences on lots of different topics. So at this point, everybody should have seen the, but you know, I will put out a note to the directors and just get a, get a feel for what everybody else is using. And that'll be a useful data point, hopefully. Everybody should have, at this point, seen my email that I think I sent out a couple of weeks ago, two weeks ago. We are going through the annual staff sexual harassment training. All of the staff have gone through this at this point, with the exception of, we're actually just one. But she's not here very often. And when she's here, she's, she's here alone and leaves before eight o'clock in the morning. So. But that still legally has to do it, and I will get on her to, to do that. But everybody else is. Many of you in your, your, you know, if you've got a job, you're going to have to go through this training at some point during the course of the year. And if you have to go through it through your, your job, that's fine. Just take your, just do that, that training, whatever form that training takes in your workplace. If not, I would be grateful if each of you would take the 45 minutes at some point over the next, let's say, month, and do the sexual harassment training. The one that we're using this year is, was put together by the New York City Human Rights Commission. It's definitely less boring than the one that we've been using in the past. Has anybody taken it? Does anybody have any feedback about the, the New York City Human Rights Commission training?
I did it this weekend, Joe.
Thank you, Melanie.
Yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't too bad. I mean, the nice thing is, is it's mostly audio, so you can listen to it and fold laundry or something like that. And it is, I like, did like the stories, too. I thought it touched on a lot of interesting things. That's good to know.
Absolutely, yeah. And it's, it's inclusive. It is, I think it's, I think it's very good. It's contemporary. It's interactive. So. So as I said in my email and in the director's report, as trustees of an association library, you are not obligated by New York state law to take the, the training. Other trustees of other kinds of libraries are. But I am asking you to do it. Other things in the director's report we'll talk about later on.
Joe, before we move on, one more quick question on, with regards to that. Do you want to know that we have done the training one way or the other? Or you're just, you just are asking us?
On our system, yeah.
Okay, all right, it's fine.
Okay, so, yeah, there's, there are other things in the director's report, but those come up later in the agenda. So I will leave it at that. We still don't have Melanie, unfortunately.
Oh, I'm here now. Can you hear me?
Oh, great, yeah, absolutely.
Hey, Melanie, you want to do the treasures report?
Yeah, let's do that real, and the financials real fast. I had to go to phone calls, so hopefully I don't get dropped. So you wanted to start with the financials?
Sure.
Yep.
Okay, there's not, not a ton. So the first one is the statement of financial position. And once again, there was nothing dramatically that changed, just kind of monthly business changes that business checking, everything else is still the same. Did anybody have any questions or anything that stood out on that one? Okay. The second one is the statement of activity, which is just what's happened January to April compared to last year. Two things that were on there that we know, that I noticed, and that we talked about with Jason. First of all, we haven't been charged for our legal fee yet this quarter. Joe did contact the law firm, and they said that, according to them, we were all paid up. You know, and I did, Joe, I don't, I didn't think of this earlier, but I did look at what we budget for the law firm, and we do only budget, it looks like, when you look at the budget, or is it the actual 2,000 for the year? I'm assuming that that's our, so maybe, maybe we, you know, I don't know what happened with that thousand last year, why it was so early, or what happened. But maybe we'll get a bill later.
Yeah, our annual retainer is, is 2,000. That's what it's been for the past three years.
So maybe they're going to do every six months, because they did say that we paid in December for the first, beginning of 2021. So we're just going to keep an eye on that, Joe. Like I said, Joe did contact them, and they said, we are good. We don't owe them anything right now.
It should be noted that Jason does not, it should be noted that Jason does not think that we paid them in December.
Oh, that's right. That's right.
Their, their bookkeeping over at Whitman, Ossman, and Hannah may not be entirely on point there. But as far as they are aware or concerned, we are paid up. So nothing else we can do about that.
Yes. And you'll also notice, kind of a little bit below the legal fees, we did our unemployment insurance, we did get that extra amount that we owed. That 400, it's a little bit higher this month because of that compared to last year, that going back. Did anybody have any questions on that, the statement of activity? Okay, and finally, the budget versus actual. And, you know, the legal fee and obviously that unemployment insurance stood out on this one. But there wasn't a whole lot else that we discussed. Did anybody else have anything for the budget versus actual, or any of the statements? Okay, everybody's still there, right? Can you all still hear me? Okay, okay, because I, it's weird to do the phone call. I can't see anybody. I'm like, oh, I wonder if I'm dropped again. So that's good. So I guess we just need to take a vote to approve May, I'm, I'm sorry, April 2021's financials. So all in favor?
Aye.
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 All right.
We have to nominate it, right?
All right, right, right. Somebody want to move that?
Oh.
I'll move it.
Amanda seconded. Okay, Deborah seconded. All in favor, we just did. Okay, we're good to go.
There you go.
All right. Was there anything else you want to talk about, Melanie?
Nope, I think the credit card policy we talked about, but that's coming later.
Okay.
That's all.
Thank you very much. All right, then we'll move on to the committee reports. Let's see. You want to do it in the order they're, they're written, Joe, or do you have a preference?
Let's take LRP committee last, I think.
Okay, so let's do personnel did not meet, so we'll move on from there. Program, anything from the program committee? Nope, did not meet. The program committee did not meet, although we heard that new programs are starting up, which is wonderful news. And the building committee, they didn't meet, but anything to report from the building committee?
Uh, yeah, well, a couple of things, I guess. We have had Paul and I met with a gentleman named Ken White. Ken Young, sorry, Ken Young. Last week, he was in to talk about giving the building a power wash. Paul has mentioned a couple of times in the past few months that the, the building has a kind of a, you know, chalky, chalky texture, kind of a, so he was, and Paul's done a couple of, you know, things to try to, try to wash that. But what he thinks is that the whole building just kinds of, kind of needs a power wash. We got a quote from Ken for power washing and scraping and repainting a couple of spots, particularly on the track-facing side where the paint is cracking and peeling. And the quote was for $1,000. He's doing work for other people in the village throughout the month of June. But I don't, you know, we don't have other quotes. And without Paul here, I don't want to, I don't want to vote on that necessarily.
Right. Was there any talk about testing the power washing to make sure that it wouldn't do anything to the paint itself that wasn't good standing?
Yes, yes, that was something that, that, that Ken was, was very conscientious about. Because he thought, you know, if there were, you know, sections that were, where the paint was coming off, it would be very difficult to match the color. And even if we could, you know, even if we had the old paint, it's, you know, it's just going to look distinctly different. So he's, he's very conscientious about not wanting to do that. Yeah. We haven't, I understand that there's going to be that work that we approved last month done on the roof throughout the month, at some point in the month. But we haven't, I don't know that that has been scheduled yet. I do have scheduled our biannual, twice annual inspection of the HVAC system. John Dewey is coming out later this week, either on Thursday or Friday, to take a look at the HVAC system. And I think that's it for the building committee.
Was the, has a Knox box been put up?
The Knox box has been delivered. It hasn't been put up. It is, it's, it's, it is heavy. It is, it's, it's like 35, 40 pounds, very small. So Paul took the directions home. He's away this week. Presumably, he will, he will do that once he gets back.
Cool, great. Thank you very much. All right, so that was the personnel, the program, the building, the finance committee. Anything to report, Melanie? No?
Nope, nope, I'm good.
Okay, then we'll go to the policy, which was the credit card use policy that we had talked about last meeting, right? We're just going to formalize it this evening, or did we not talk about it last meeting? I don't recall.
No, we've talked about it in several different committee meetings.
Okay, that's what it was. All right, so we got to talk about the credit card use policy.
Yep.
Are you going to pull that up for us, Joe, or do?
I am pulling that up right now.
Excellent.
Hold on. Let's see. Oh, no. Okay. Sorry, just give me one second. Okay, so this is a new policy for us. And despite my best efforts, I was not able to find a great. Sorry, hold on. What's going on? Sorry, I got something weird going on with my screen here. Oh, come on. Very sorry, folks. Okay, I'm trying to. Okay, how's that?
That looks good.
Okay, sorry about that. Okay, so here we go. The credit card policy is an entirely new policy for us. We had a discussion about this a couple of years ago, and then for whatever reason, we just didn't get, didn't get formalized. So I didn't find a whole lot of good models for a credit card policy out there in the world amongst other libraries. So most of this was crafted from, from whole cloth. And for that reason, it's gone both to the policy and to the finance committee. Both of those committees have looked at it a couple of times. It's gone back and forth. And I think it's in pretty good shape at this point. The goal of the policy is to make sure that the, the library credit card is being used in a responsible manner. And it dictates who is able to use the credit card. So in this policy, we say that the library director, the president of the board of trustees, and the chairperson of the bank, building committee would have access to the, would have access to the credit card. We only have one credit card. When either the director, the president, or the chair of the building committee are not using it, the card will live in the library safe. All library, all purchases made with the library credit card must be for library purposes, obviously. Approved purchases can be made for up to $249, or purchases can be made for up to $249 per item without prior approval of the board. Anything more expensive than that would require, any item more expensive than $249 would require prior board approval. And no more than $2,000 can be charged over the course of a single billing cycle, excepting, with the exception of those prior approved, more than $249 items. Receipts of all purchases are going to be kept and submitted both to the treasurer and to the bookkeeper with every credit card bill. Credit card statements are reviewed monthly by both the library director and the treasurer. We have a place of procedure for what happens if we suspect that purchases have been made that are not strictly library-related. And so that, that, that procedure is basically that if somebody feels, if the treasurer or anybody else in the, the library finance ecosystem feels that purchases have been made that are not library-related, that goes to, the report goes to the finance committee. The finance committee can refer to the full board for a final decision as to whether or not the purchases in question were legitimate. The person who made the purchase will have a opportunity to speak to the finance committee and to the full board about this. And if the board decides that the questionable purchases were not legitimate, there, the person who made those purchases is liable for, for, to repay the library. And in cases of flagrant misuse, either firing is in order or expulsion from the board. So that is the policy. So that is the policy. Does anybody have any questions about it?
Okay, not hearing any. Uh, can we get a motion then to accept the draft policy as we were just described by Joe for our credit card policy for the Altamont Free Library? Anybody wanna make that motion? Thank you, Deborah. Deborah made the motion seconded?
Well, so.
Thank you, Dick. All in favor of accepting the draft, uh, credit card? That's unanimous. Unless, unless is anybody opposed or abstaining? Nope, okay, so we have a credit card policy.
Thank you all.
All right, and let's see, um, now we're on to
Uh, I think we should go back to the long range.
Long range planning, yes, indeed. Long range planning survey, okay, so the committee met, and what did y'all talk about?
So, uh, we talked about, uh, a number of things, uh, but the, uh, the, the, the two, we had two meetings, which were focused primarily on crafting, um, questions for the upcoming, um, uh, community survey. I included those questions in the board packet, and we can go through those, uh, in a moment, but, um, before we do that, uh, we did have, uh, Dan, uh, suggested to, uh, to us, uh, in response to the board packet. He reminded me that we had talked about this at our last meeting, and I'd completely forgotten, so I apologize for that, Dan.
It wasn't a question of, I just, that, that was not a big deal. I was, I'm still just concerned about the whole process, but go ahead.
So, yeah, so we'll, we'll, we'll talk about that. Um, so, uh, Dan, do you wanna, do you wanna?
Sure. My, my thought, when, when looking over the questions, it, 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 I mean, I know we talked about it last time, but then when I saw the questions on paper, it just, it struck me as, it, it didn't make sense in my mind, okay? Now, I, I, again, I'm one person, that's all, and these are just my thoughts. It didn't make sense in my mind, the, the fact that we have been not operational normally for how many months now, uh, well over a year, that putting out a, a survey now, I was questioning what kind of valuable information are we going to get? I mean, as I was reading the question, I was trying to envision myself answering the question, and, and the thought was going through my head was, am I supposed to answer this as if we just went through a pandemic, or am I supposed to be answering this prior to the pandemic? And it just, it just, to me, it doesn't seem like the right time to be doing it. That's my personal opinion. I would, I thought it would be a much wiser use of our time to get all of our programming back to the way we have been accustomed to, and then let it operate for a while, and then go visit, revisit this with the, um, with the long range planning. Meaning we put off the long range planning schedule a little bit, but I didn't think that was, that was a big deal. But that was my thought. I just, I questioned what kind of valuable information we're actually gonna get, given the fact that the library has been less than operational over these many, many months, so that's all.
Yeah, um, uh, so, yeah, yeah, let's, let's, uh, let's open.
I, I'd like to jump in on that too. Dan, I have a, a similar thought, and, um, I think you, we could delay the survey entirely. Um, we could also rephrase the questions slightly. Um, when I had done a survey for, um, a study for work, we, obviously, everything was thrown by the pandemic for us too, and this happened to be the, our end of year, or our end of, uh, study survey going out recently. And what we ended up doing was taking the questions we would ordinarily have asked and said, in twenty twenty, or over the last twelve months, or however you wanted to phrase it, you know, what would your answers have been? In a typical year prior to the pandemic, what would your answers have been? And break it out, break each question out into two separate questions. Um, so that we could see what people have been doing over the past year, and maybe see, you know, what works, things that we might like to keep, things that people were availing themselves of, that might have been different, but also ask them what they would have used or would have liked to seen in more typical circumstances.
No, I, I hear what you're saying, and, and I thought about that, and, um, uh, when I was reading through the questions, and the thought that went through my head was, are, are we going to just get responses back from the folks that we know we're gonna get responses back anyway?
Yeah.
And because, you know, once you start to complicate this, people are gonna say, oh, I don't wanna do this. And, and we're trying to get as many people respond to this as possible, so, I don't know, I, yeah, I thought about what you said, Shannon, it's a good point, and, um, but anyway, that's, that's
Yeah, I, I mean, it does double the length of your survey, so I see what you're, I see what you're saying. It's kind of benefits and drawbacks to that approach.
So, um, uh, among the committee, I mean, we did, uh, we did describe, we did discuss sort of phrasing questions in, in that way. And crafting questions that were, um, that got to, um, you know, how has your use of the library changed over the past fourteen months? So I, I guess, you know, for, for me, the most important thing that we could get out of a survey if we do it now or soon is as we come back, as we reopen, what are the things that we have put in place over the past fourteen months that people wanna see carried forward? Um, what do people wanna see from the, the before times come back? How do people, you know? I, I, I think it's, I think it's really important to know how we're doing right now, um, and what the community wants from us right now. So that, you know, uh, so there's, so I think there's, there's
What would you expect a possible answer to be for that? Are you saying like, maybe they wanna still have grab and go services, and that sort of thing? I mean, are there other things besides that that you foresee people potentially answering, or is that what you're really thinking, what you're gonna get?
Yeah, um, you know, so i- if you, if you think about the, the whole, you know, the broad range of things that we've been doing over the past year, do people want, uh, you know, do people want video storytimes in addition to live storytimes? Do people still want grab and go services? Do people want browsing by appointment? Do they want, um, you know, do they want virtual programming? Do they want us to be spending more on, uh, digital content, uh, than we are on hard content? These are all questions that we have to sort of figure out. We know that they work okay, um, or sometimes very well right now. Um, are people still going to want them, you know, do people still want them now as we, as we, as we are opening up? So, we, we can, go ahead.
Makes a lot of sense, Joe, but it, I don't know if you get that with the questions. Can we just ask that in the questions? You know, like, like, what are some new stuff, like, because I think it is unclear. I, cause I, I mean, I think that is legitimate, so like, any of the new services that we opened for the COVID pandemic, which of those would you like to keep? And it can be a, you know, check these boxes. It might be easier to get answered that question.
I, I, I agree with you on that one, uh, as well, because that wa- that was one of the things I was thinking as you were going through the list, it was, will people come up with that themselves? And, um,
I didn't think of the video storytime at first either, but then, once you mentioned it, I was like, oh, yeah. You know, so, so having that checklist of, these are the different things we did, and we'd like to continue forward, I think, might help, because you might not be thinking of it at the moment.
You know, and I think that's good feedback, because we were thinking, I think our point was the first after you answer all the things, like what have your families used this past year? And then that next question, what are the most important services you wish to have available from the Altamont Free Library now or in the future? That's the question we were hoping was gonna get to what you're saying, but clearly that wasn't clear enough. So we were hoping you might say, I'd like in-person storytime, or I'd like to continue browsing by appointment. So, we were leaving that open, because we were, that's where we were trying to get to past and present. So we had just listed all the services we had provided for this year. And then we had the question, do you not, you know, do you use the library? If not, why not? And then the next one was, what else would you like to continue? So we couldn't make it like another dropdown, and they check, but we were kind of leaving it open, because we were trying to get at that other piece of now going back to normal, what, what things, either way, what things from the past, did you still find, find successful, and what new things do you want moving forward?
I understand what you're saying. I just, I just don't know about someone doing the survey and leaving it open like that. I, I'm, I'm, I'm dubious as to whether or not you're gonna get, just like was mentioned, you know, oh, I forgot about video storytime, or, you know, and, and then you may be missing some really important feedback that you wanna get, if you're in fact gonna do a survey, um, without, without providing them with some, some degree of direction of, I mean, they still have to decide, yes, I like that, I use that, I want that in the future, as opposed to, oh, I forgot, you know, it's been fourteen months, hey, you know, people might have, you know, it could have been a lot, a lot of time has gone by, so, I don't know.
I, I would suggest, um, have, giving that same list again with, you know, with radio buttons, letting people check off, because it does have other. So if people are looking to, you know, yes, I'd like video storytime, yes, I'd like curbside pickup, yes, I'd also like other, that, that option exists for them to make suggestions for, for future programming too. So you could just duplicate the list, and then say, all right, this is what they use, this is what they think they'd continue to use, unless they have other ideas.
I think one of our concerns was just to add the future stuff. You're gonna have a super long list. But I think, you know what, we were gonna repeat the list, but then we wanted to add in like the now, like in-person storytime, in-person, so that would just make your bulleted list. But it seems like that would be more clear, you know, um, or maybe the question goes right after that, from the last questions list, which would you like to carry over, and then which new, you know? Cause we started writing out, when you have the old and new stuff, then your list becomes very overwhelming of a list of, a lot of stuff.
Yeah.
But, but if you think about it, if it's overwhelming of a list to just read through, it's gonna be overwhelming of a list to write out. And so people might want extra services, but they're not, you're only gonna get the first things that they think of, which might be the most important thing, or it might just be the first thing on their mind, which, I guess, sometimes is gonna be the most important. So, that's just a thought that they're gonna mention some other stuff.
I'm also thinking that there are some things that they, that we could leave out, like, I mean, we're not going to stop offering photocopying services if nobody checks it, right? Um, there are some things that we don't necessarily need to know people's intentions, because it's not anything that's on the potential chopping block anyhow. So we could simplify the, the going forward list that way by taking out things that we know we're going to continue to offer no matter what.
Yeah, I think that's a really good point. I mean, the thing is, if you're saying, okay, what did we do during the pandemic that we might continue to do if people want us to do? I mean, that's, that's, that's a much shorter list, and I think that's, I think that's what I, one of the questions I think you're asking for people is, you know, if I'm understanding what Joe is saying, and what Katie's saying, is that, that, you know, we did things differently these last fourteen months. Were there any of those things that you want us to continue to do? And I mean, curbside pickup is, is, is a great example, because there could be a lot of people, not because they're afraid about coming in the library, but they just like the convenience of, oh, my, my book is there, I don't have to come in, I don't have to talk to anybody, I can just find it with my name on the bag. And, um, and, you know, that's, that may be a service that we should be providing, and we'll know that if, if, you know, that's, yeah, anyway.
I, I, I think that's, that's all absolutely right on. I think that's totally legitimate. The, you know, the other, the other piece of it is, you know, what are we not doing well? What do we need to know that we're, that we're not doing well? And, um, you know, so we crafted a couple of questions that try to, you know, sort of, maybe obliquely, maybe too obliquely, get at that. So, so just setting aside, and we can obviously come back to it, but just setting aside for a second, the the, the, the survey versus the rest of the long-range planning process. Um, I think there's, uh, a strong case to be made, if you wanted to make it, that, um, the next couple of steps of the long-range planning process, um, which focus, uh, on focus groups uh, and data collection, um, in, in a couple of different ways, tabling in public places that our, our people are going to be, um, outreach to, to various groups that we wanna get feedback from in the, the community. I, I can see putting that off until next year, saying, we're gonna take the current long-range plan extended by a year. And when things are more normal, when it's, you know, when, when human interaction is, is, is more routine, you know, than it is right now, um, then we can set up a table in the park uh, and, you know, talk to our neighbors and our community members about what they wanna see from the library. And then, you know, craft the long-range plan based on that, um, for it to begin January first, twenty twenty-three. So that's, that's a kind of a separate issue, but, uh, the, 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 the current survey that we're talking about, I think it fulfills a, a purpose within the long-range planning process, but it also has that that purpose of letting us know right now how we're doing as we, you know, muddle our way through this very unusual point in, in library history, where we've got these new services, we've got these legacy services. And, you know, and we're, we're reconfiguring how we operate, um, and how we interact with our public, so. So I do think there's a lot of value in, um, in having a survey now or, or soon. Recrafting the questions is, is definitely, you know, something that's on the table. If we are going by the uh, a, a calendar where we need to have a final product, um, produced by December thirty-first, then putting the survey off becomes more of a problem. If we're not doing that, then, you know, maybe we have a little bit more leeway to go back uh, and think about those questions again before we put the survey out to the community. What do we think about that?
The term, long-range planning, we don't know. I mean, it's like asking, uh, something like, well, what do, what are you gonna do tomorrow, you know? So, I think it needs, I, I, I agree that we should be tabling this or do something, and not, can't do it right now, because there's so many unknowns. It's like, uh, with the kids, with their, um, you know, meeting in the park, but who knows how long we're gonna do it? Maybe just once, uh, who knows? But it's so many unknowns, and to do it now, it's, it's, I don't, I don't get it.
Okay, thank you, Dick.
Yeah, I, I think, I think it makes sense to do some sort of survey right now, Joe, because I see what you and Katie are saying about being able to capture what people are thinking right now while they're still using these new services, about whether they'd like to carry them forward, before we're in a position to try to make a decision with no information, um, about whether to keep them. You know, we don't wanna pull programs or offerings that are new pandemic offerings, only to find out that people were really hoping, expecting them to continue. Um, is there a way that we can break out, uh, the survey, so we can do something now that captures um, whether we wanna carry new programs forward, and then do the, the bigger picture, more normal interaction, um, long-range plan survey, you know, put it off for a year like Dick and Dan were recommending?
Would it make sense to do a pandemic response survey? Like, just cage it as something different, because it sounds like that's really what, what we're talking about, and then doing long range later. And so I don't, I don't know how much effort it is to do it twice, but in a year, I mean, we can't decide about the, the concerts. I mean, I agree with Dick that, like, no one knows what's gonna happen. And, but, but it would be, and that might change the question a little bit on, like, some of even the opening, like, did you feel comfortable with with everything, but I think, I think aging, there was, like, how people feel we responded to the pandemic. But I think, I think aging, there was like how people feel we responded to the pandemic is, is very reasonable. But it's sort of a different question. I feel like we're trying to tackle two questions, which might be the confusion, like, how did we do for the pandemic and what do you want going forward? And then how do you want your library now? What seems different?
And I, I'd be, I'd be careful too in terms of, you know, posing the question, you know, that you mentioned, Joe, I think you mentioned this a few minutes ago. You know, how are we doing or how did we do and this sort of thing? I mean, you know, nobody was happy with, with us closing the library. I mean, really, I mean, it's, we had to do it and we, we had to do it and it was a smart thing to do. But I mean, I don't think that's gonna be, they may be disappointed with our closing the library, but that doesn't mean anything to us because we didn't have a choice. And so, um, I think, I think what Shannon and Rachel are saying, I think there's, there's a lot to that. I think that if you just look at moving forward, one of this, what kind of things that we did, we wanna bring forward into the future, that's valuable information if you're gonna do it. And I, I agree with Rachel, maybe we put off those, or Shannon, or maybe both of them said it, put off the much bigger picture things when we actually get involved with the long-range, new long-range planning. I don't know, that's my thought, but I've been talking too much to all stuff.
Well, I agree exactly with what you're saying, kind of that post-pandemic response, Rachel, is a great idea, only because we're starting to see the light at the end of the tunnel, so we wanna start welcoming back in patrons, but we're not sure what they want right now in the immediate sense. And opposed to like, you know, maybe some of these things they like the idea of, or maybe they say, okay, well, that we kinda like the idea about like a curbside pickup, but you know, can we draw upon that a little more? Something that we did as a pandemic response, but they wanna see catered forward i- in the next six months. You know, 12 months might be a whole different story, but I just, I think as people are starting to ease into, you know, what's gonna be our new societal norm, we wanna know how you guys can pivot forward as a library staff, you know, and when, what they truly want from you. Cause if there's something we're not thinking of as a board, we may wanna pull back and say, okay, to people, you like this or you didn't like this, or what else can we spend our time on? I, I think you'll get a clearer picture, more accurate picture of the data a year from now. Cause it's, we're all still kinda, life is still kinda messy with everything that's going on.
And I think Amanda, to kind of to what you're saying, as far as the timeframe goes, if we decide to do, as Rachel suggested, and have a pandemic response survey and then a long-range planning survey in the future, it would help on the pandemic response survey to give people a timeframe for when we're talking about carrying something forward. So if we say, you know, did you like this enough that you want us to continue doing it? Well, it may be that people are saying for the next six months, I'd like curbside service to be an option because people are still getting vaccinated and we're waiting for things to go back to normal. So we might say, you know, would you like us to carry these things forward, you know, through the end of the year? With the understanding that next year, we'll ask the same questions again, is this something that you would like us to carry forward into our long-range plan? So that people know that they're not, they're giving us an accurate answer for the time period that we'd be applying it to. Instead of some indefinite thing, they may really want curbside service now and not want it next year. And we maintain the option to ask that question again as part of the long-range plan and maybe get a different answer then.
Yeah, that, I think that's, you're gonna get the cleanest data that way, just because it's still so, there's still people up in the air. There's, you know, look at our, what are, are we gonna require a mask still, even if CDC says no, because you're fully vaccinated? Are we gonna make people provide an Excelsior pass at the door if they wanna come in without a mask? I mean, I, I think there's that sense of the post-pandemic response, we can get immediate answers now, that'll help us craft a better long-range plan. I mean, normally I would say, you know, long-range plan, absolutely, but this past year has been quite the game changer. And I think we need to piecemeal it just a little bit, so we can get through to the end of the year as the library itself to keep our services going.
And I'm wondering if this adds to an even larger conversation, because I feel like I could argue every year feels so different. Like maybe it's, I was asking Dan, who works at the Albany Public Library, they had a quick survey on their site. And I was like, is that your long-range plan survey? And he thinks it's an annual, like they annually just get feedback. He wasn't positive, so it might not be. But I do feel like as a community member, like the more input people feel they have to their own library, I think that's important. So maybe it's just thinking about like this idea of long-range planning, but how are we constantly taking the temperature? You know, because I think this year, if any year proved, you never know what's going to happen. Um, and maybe there's simpler ways, like not so in-depth, but I think, I think as a community, if you've kind of feel like your input is constantly being asked or you feel like the community is serving you versus, you know, once in a blue moon, I'm asked. And that's why I think, you know, doing it after the pandemic is really important. Like there was things we couldn't control, but here's all the things we did do, did this work for you? Because this might happen again, right? Or what else do you? But I think if you feel like your feedback is given and you also, we kinda thought too, I'm not sure everyone in the community knew all the stuff the library was doing. So you might look at that survey and go, oh, I didn't even know curbside pickup. I think the pandemic could have made you really isolated to not even know some of these things were still going on. So I think in a way too, it was kind of thinking like, oh, I didn't, you know, like, I didn't know, I mean, museum passes were available, not saying, you know what? I'm just saying like things that people might not have even been aware of. But I, to everyone's point, I do feel like there's something about, maybe it's this continual taking a temperature of like, how are things? How are the, how is the community feeling about in general, any service the library is providing?
I, I just wanna say, I, I think it's a great idea too. I do like the idea of a pandemic survey. I feel like we'd almost be missing an opportunity to learn about some of these things if we don't ask the question now as we're going back. And I, and I definitely like the idea of saying a timeline through the end of the year, so you, you know, when you're answering the question for it. We might find, you know, I know, they said like good that comes out of it, some things that we never would have thought of if this didn't happen and continuing them on.
Yeah, I think the timeline, I couldn't place why I felt uncomfortable answering the questions, but I think it's because I don't know what my answer will be like in the fall. But I know what my answer would be now. And so knowing that, like, I don't know what near-term means anymore. Yeah, I don't know where I'm gonna work. I don't know, it's gonna be at home. Like, you know, there's so many open questions. And I can answer for this part. And so I think that's a really good idea, putting that timeframe in there, which I think is why the long-range feels weird.
Okay, um, I think, uh, I detected consensus on rolling the current long-range plan forward by a year. We're extending it by a year, going forward with a pandemic-related survey to see, you know, what folks want in the near term. And, um, and then separately, having a survey next year and potentially every year, I like that idea a lot, Katie. So I guess, uh, I'll ask somebody to make a motion to extend the current long-range plan forward till the end of 2022. Thank you, Deborah. Anybody want to second that?
I'll second.
Thank you, Shannon.
Did you say the end of 2022?
Yeah, the current survey, the, the current long-range plan ends at the end of 2021. So the new one would end at the end of 2022. Dan, you wanna ask for a vote on that?
All, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Anybody opposed or abstaining? Alright, thank you very much. That was good, a very good conversation. Thank you all for, for your input. That's why we love our library board.
Absolutely. Good, good talk. I also wanna thank Deborah and Katie, and also separately Christine Carpenter, well, not separately, but she's not here, for all of the work that they've done on the long-range plan so far and hopefully will continue to do. Now that we've got a longer timeframe on this, we can, you know, we can go forward with different ways of collecting data. And I think the, the pandemic survey is going to be important. I would like to leave that in the laps of the, the long-range planning committee, even though maybe it's not entirely long-range plan related. Is that okay with everybody?
Yeah.
Okay.
Joe, there was, I remember Tim Burke from Upper Hudson, he said something about the long range. It's not a requirement that we do a three-year long-range plan, is it?
There's not a requirement that we do a three-year long-range plan. Some do three, some do five. Those are kind of the two flavors that I'm aware of.
So four.
But it is, it is, it is, it is a requirement that we have a long-range plan.
Okay, alright. I need there was a requirement there. I just wanna make sure we're still meeting it. Thanks.
Alright, anybody else have other comments? Then we're gonna move on to old business. Uh, under old business, we have a roof contract, but we've already talked about that, so we can move off of that. Reopening for browsing by headcount and update?
Yep.
Can you update us with Joe?
Well, not, not, uh, this is not an update. This is a request for a change in our sort of primary mode of, of business. What specifically I'm asking for the board to do is to take a look at the changes that I've made to or proposed to the, uh, to the health and safety guidelines. And if the board approves, then we would move from a model where we are browsing, we're allowing browsing by appointment to a model where we're allowing browsing by headcount. And so essentially what that means is the doors are open, there's no gate at the front door anymore. And we say, you know, there can be 10 people, including staff, in the library at any given time. If there are more than 10 people, we will ask them to wait their turn. And, um, and, uh, you know, I, hopefully we, there aren't going to be a whole lot of times that people will have to wait. You know, maybe it'll happen from time to time. But this would essentially, you know, remove one of those, those last big psychic barriers to what feels like normal library business. Uh, under the, the changes that I've made to the, the, the health and safety plan, patrons would still be limited to 20 minutes at a time. This is to allow greater, a greater amount of circulation. We would open back up the, one of the standing, the, the standing computer terminal, one of the bathrooms. And that would be it. People would no longer have to call for an appointment. We would still have a grab and go service available. So we will continue making the calls out to everybody who is getting reserves sent to them to let them know, to ask them if they want to make an appointment to pick up their materials. You can use those phone calls to also let people know about browsing by headcount rather than appointment. And that would be, that's, that's the change.
Joe, that, you know, as of Wednesday, those CDC guidelines are changing. And is that something that you converse with the staff about, about, you know, if these people are coming in to browse a certain amount at a headcount? Is it by a family account only, or is it people that we know are fully vaccinated? Are we still gonna require a mask or, and/or, you know, that Excelsior pass if somebody says, listen, I'm fully vaccinated and they don't wanna wear the mask? Have we thought about how we might have to approach that situation after Wednesday?
I have thought about it a great, great deal. My strong preference, and I am your employee and this is your library, and this is your decision to make. But my strong preference is to not ask people whether they are vaccinated or not, or ask them to show an Excelsior pass or their, their vaccine card. And to continue to require masks to be worn in the library. Not everybody can get the vaccine at this point. And I, I'm, I, I do not wanna make it the staff's responsibility to have to police whether people are vaccinated or not. Simply asking people to do that very simple thing that we're all so used to at this point, just wear the mask while you're inside. I, I don't think that's too much to ask. I recognize that we're going to get some static from some, some small number of people about that, but.
Well, and that's why I'm asking, if they're calling to set up those appointments, can, are you gonna have like that little guideline, like for the, the level of comfort for everybody? We, because masks will still be required in some places, that we are requiring you to wear a mask. Just so somebody wouldn't show up and put the staff in that awkward position, because places still are requiring to mask. You know, and I, I understand that, you know, I, I, I get it. That's why I'm trying to play devil's advocate and throw those things out there, just food for thought. But no, I just, as long as we can still inform people, I have no problem with it either.
Yep.
In terms of that informing part two, I mean, there, I'm assuming there'll be a, a very clear signage on the front door saying maximum 10 people at one time or eight people plus two staff. And that means the staff is counting people when they're coming in, because, I mean, Hannaford over in Horaceville, they've got somebody sitting right there when you walk in who's got a little counter and, and I don't know what happens when they go beyond a certain number, but they're obviously counting people that are coming in the grocery store, so.
Yeah, my, my, what, what I've come up with that for, would have, what I've come up with it for that is, we'll have a whiteboard. And people will sign in with their initials and their time in. When the 10 slots are filled, then, uh, you know, then, then we'll ask people to, to wait.
You could get a growling rottweiler, Joe, too, by the way, that would just sit at the door.
I like it. I like it. Uh, and then as people leave, they will just erase themselves from the, the whiteboard. And so there will be an easy, clear visual.
That's cool.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have them sign in with their initials so that they're not using their name. Use their time so that they can, you know, that they're, they're thinking the whole time about, you know, where am I in my 20 minutes?
That's cool.
Another thing that I know, um, that some stores, I think at the mall, were doing for a while and may still be doing. It is, they've just got one of those little metal signs on a stand thing that says, you know, we're at capacity, please wait to be served. And when they're at capacity, they just put that up in the doorway. You could even put that right out on the front step so that people don't have to enter the building to find out whether they're eligible to come in.
I like that.
Is, is 10 people, like, I don't know how many we normally had, or if there was a normal time, like, is in the before times? Would 10 have been sort of like an average number or?
No, that would've been high, um, at any given time, but, you know, you just need a family of four to come in and, you know, and, and. So, uh, you can, so 10, 10 is, 10 is high, but it's, it, it doesn't feel, it, you know, you're not jostling through crowds of people at, at 10 people. Unless they're all looking for DVDs at the same time. It, the, the, the building can, under my best attempt at figuring out what New York State is asking of me, the, the building can safely accommodate as many as 24 people if all of those people are in a circle with a perimeter of six feet, or not a perimeter, at a, a radius of six feet. So that there are, you know, that, that, that every person has a six feet clearance on all sides. So this is less than half of that. And we can, we can modify that if that is not the right number. This is an entirely, uh, you know, this is, this is not a, this is not a science, this is an art. And we can, we can futz with that number if we need to.
I think it sounds like a safe and good start, like I think 10 would be a lot. I think very rarely you're gonna put up the sign that it's full. And I also think so, just like a perspective of a, like Albany was doing the limits of people and like tomorrow they start like full capacity. So this is definitely like the way in which I, obviously you have to wear masks, like that's the big thing. But I think this is like a good first step to that, because I think 10 seems like a fair number, that you could still be in there if you safely. But I think as long as masks are required, um, it seems like a safe time to do that.
It almost seems too good to be true.
That's great.
Yeah. Yeah. So if the board approves. Yeah. So if the board approves, we would go ahead with this a week from today.
Okay. Can we get a motion then to approve that change in our, what's this thing we're changing again? What's it called?
We are changing.
Library reopening policy, correct?
That's right. The, the, the library reopening policy.
Okay. So can I get somebody, unless there are any other comments or questions?
If you change the number, Joe, it, would it have to be a, it wouldn't have to be a board vote or anything, right? Like if you, you're like, the H is all we can do, or 12, like?
I'll tell you what, why don't, why don't we make the, why don't we make the, the change for up to 12 people? I will at the outset say 10. But then I'll have some headroom if we need to change that upwards a little bit.
Can I request also someday that you might use an odd number too? Just for some.
No.
Just in case we have to break a tie? Okay.
All right. So. Anybody else have any comments? That was a good one. Thank you, Rachel.
I can say up to 12 people, the discretion of the, of the director, library director.
Sure.
What were you gonna say, Dick?
Let's run and be clear. Why do you say motion now?
Oh, we haven't done, we haven't said anything yet. We're getting there.
Okay.
Yeah, it is to update the Altamont Free Library reopening plan. Which I think is on the screen. Yes, it is. And with the revisions that I suggested in the board packet to allow browsing by headcount rather than browsing by appointment for as many as 10 patrons at a time.
Okay. That's the, that is the, what is before us? Who would like to make a motion to accept that?
Was it 10 or 12?
So yeah, so it's 10 patrons at a time, plus two staff members.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay. Who, who, who made the motion? Dick, you just made the motion. How's that?
No, I made, don't move.
Who would like to second the motion that Dick just made? Thank you, Deborah. All in favor? Anybody abstaining or objecting or objecting or abstaining? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. This makes me very happy.
Well, that's our job. All right. Summer concert series update. Anything to tell us about that or not?
Well, yep. So this is, you're gonna decide whether we're gonna have one. Given the, the, the governor's new guidelines for public performances and large outdoor gatherings. We can now have as many as 500 people at a, at a gathering that is more than twice the number that we have ever had at our largest concert. So we are safely under the, the limit. We were not necessarily under that limit with the 200-person guideline that came before this. COVID rates are low. You know, and I, so I had a meeting with the mayor last week or the week before. The mayor wants us to go ahead with the, the concert series. Lori McCutcheon, our concert organizer, is raring to go. She's got bands mentally lined up. And as soon as we say go, she will start, start booking them. So this would be for a series of five concerts in the park, starting the Tuesday, Tuesday, July 6th, ending Tuesday, August 3rd. We will have to end by August 3rd in order to accommodate construction that's going to be done in Orsini Park on the, the sidewalks. I did discuss with the mayor the ideas that we talked about in our last meeting, the idea of having it over at Bozenkill. She was not excited about that. I, she, she was not, she was not encouraging of that, let's say. So, so we would spend up to $3,000, hopefully less, probably less, almost certainly less. We try to spend about a hundred dollars per performer in a group. And that rule of thumb has generally served us pretty well. We have five concerts instead of six. We should be safely under that, under that budget. So what do people think?
Yay.
My only question, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, the feedback that I'm getting and the questions that I'm getting just out talking with people is the, the community really, really wants this to happen.
Yes, they really, really do.
They really do. As do we.
I was gonna say the same thing. It's been a really positive response and people keep saying, well, Amanda, maybe it's gonna be later in the summer. And, you know, I get it. I think there'll still be people that'll be cautious. I, I think people want this so bad, they'll still be respectful of guidelines.
Yeah, and I feel like we're certainly in a different place than when we were having this discussion just a month ago where numbers were ticking back up again. I, I think since the week after our last board meeting, it's been a consistent downward trend, which has been, you know, a nice, long slide into normalcy.
Yes. Yeah.
Oh, that includes, no, no mask or mask or?
I think we're gonna have to say that there's no requirement for masks. But we can say from the stage, we can ask people from the stage, but we just don't, we don't have the, you know, even if you all volunteer at every concert to do nothing but go around and wag your fingers at people who are, you know, not wearing masks when we told them to, we're still not going to get everybody to wear a mask. So I think that the, the smart thing to do there is to encourage social distancing to to, to wear masks. I, I even threw up the idea to, to Todd Pucci, the police chief who, who also joined us of having one side masked and one side of the park, no masks. That, that idea did not, did not go very far. So I, I think it's going to have to be suggested, not required.
Well, I think it's worth a try.
All right. Would anybody like to make the motion?
I'll make it.
I'll second.
Okay. Before we vote on it, the, the worst-case scenario, and I'm, I'm not, I'm not trying to be the, the wet blanket, but the worst-case scenarios, we pay all these musicians, something happens, numbers go up, we don't, we lose the money and it's not that big a amount of money that we're dealing with anyway, correct?
That is the worst case.
These people, we're gonna pay them whether they play or not. If, if events happen that preclude their playing, I would hope that would be the case, but I don't know.
I don't know. I don't know how we, I can go back and I can look at the contracts. We use a pretty boilerplate contract. It probably depends in large part at what, you know, how much notice we're giving the band. If it's the day of, that's why we always go forward with, you know, even, you know, marginal cases of, of, of rain. We, we, you know, we always plow through anyway.
Okay. And numbers go back up.
You're right. The worst-case scenario is that all five, is that on July 5th, the governor makes an announcement that, you know, that these cannot go forward. And we're out, you know, some portions, maybe all of the $3,000 and maybe less.
Okay. I just wanted to put that out just so we all know that that is a possibility, a very shrinkingly small one, but nonetheless, we have to at least know that. So.
Yep. Thank you. You're right.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay. Very good. Let's go to a concert.
All right.
All right. And into new business. This, now we're going to a strawberry social.
Okay, this is real simple. The, whether, you know, whatever we do, the Altamont Community Tradition is putting together their strawberry social on June. It's in here somewhere, June 22nd, Tuesday, June 22nd, Tuesday, Thursday. Tuesday, June 22nd. They've asked us to participate in a couple of different ways. They would like us to organize field games, which I'm absolutely fine with. We've got a couple of croquet sets here up in the attic. We'll source a couple of cornhole sets, things like that. We'll run the games. They would also like us to organize music for that event. So I would like the board to approve if you are willing and interested, up to $100 for a performer for that event, which is a super nice event.
Does that emotion?
I don't know. If somebody wants to make the motion, then sure.
Does anybody want to make any comments about that first before we put a motion on the table? Anybody? Okay. And Joe, Dick, you want to make that motion then?
Sure. I'll make that motion. That we have this ice cream thing.
Gotcha. Okay. Okay. So we're gonna allocate a hundred dollars for a musician and provide games and, and that sort of support for the ACT Strawberry Social. Would like to second Dick's motion. Anybody?
A second.
Deborah. All right. And all in favor of Altamont Free Libraries' participation in the ACT Strawberry Social as described?
Hi.
Or objecting? All right. There you go.
Thank you.
And then we go to, let's see, then we go to what? Then we go to
Grant.
Of who?
You and I were talking about.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, yeah, that's right.
Describe your vision.
Okay. So anyway, since we're talking post-pandemic now, I don't, maybe this is just crazy on my part. It's not my part. It's, it's my family's part. Okay. So let's, let's, let's put the blame where it belongs, myself and my wife. All right. Because we run a lot. She and I run a lot and we, we end up talking to each other because who else are you gonna talk to? And we make, Joe has been kicking this idea around also for a while. So he can't put this all on my shoulders either. Thank you very much. You can't. So don't give him a little shrug of the shoulders. Okay. Anyway. My wife, who, who's a visual artist, you know, sees other libraries doing things with maker spaces and, you know, where things are available for people to use, whether it be a 3D printer, whether it be, what it's called now. Joe, you remember what I told you that thing was called? You don't, do you?
I don't in particular.
All right. I don't either. Okay. Don't worry about it.
But, 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 but the, you know, sewing machines, podcast recording equipment, green screens, things like that.
Like a cricket?
What's that?
Like a cricket machine?
Cricket. That's the thing. Yes. A cricket machine. Thank you, Amanda. That's exactly what I'm talking about. And I was even thinking, Rachel, this one's for you, an incubator even, that people could borrow if they wanted to hatch eggs some year. You know what I'm thinking? So Joe's always had this idea for tools, you know, like a post hole digger, because everybody doesn't need to borrow a post hole digger, but we could have one. And then that people could borrow it. It could be a really neat little asset for the library to have these things that people might be able to borrow. Even a drone for that matter. Wouldn't that be fun for, you know, for, for people to do, you know, projects with and things like that. So. Anyway, I threw this idea out to Joe, who has, who has, who has always talked about having like a little shed with tools in the back in his current parking spot is where he even described it, I believe. And he was willing to give up his parking spot for that. And, but anyway, it's something that maybe we should try to pursue post-pandemic. This was an idea anyway. Looking for grant money that we could purchase these things and then, you know, you know, get back into normal. This is my thought anyway. Get back into normal operations with kind of a little bit of a splash even, a little bit, something beyond what we've done in the past and something that's gonna raise our, our, our profile a little bit in the community because who doesn't want to borrow a post hole digger?
I, I have, yeah, I mean, I, I have said in the past that I would like to start a tool and seed library. So the, the idea that I've been talking about is that we would buy a shed, you know, sort of off the, off the shelf shed. But we would have to retrofit it with doors on both the front and the back. And then we would put a divider kind of halfway down the shed. We could use the back entrance for outdoor library stuff, storage, our ladders, our, just our stuff, our rigs and, you know, have that extra bit of space out there. The front, the public-facing door would have tools and equipment that people use regularly, but rarely, hedge clippers and post hole diggers and augers and you know, a sledgehammer, a have a heart. Things, things like this. I think that we could get really nice things donated by people who just want them out of their own sheds. And we would have these things available for any member of the library to check out for a day or two days. And then you return them to the, to the tool library. This might be accompanied by a seed library where we take heirloom seeds for fruits, vegetables, flowers. And we package those and put those out for people to exchange amongst another, one another. And, and to replenish annually. That's my idea. And, but we can also put the, we can also put the drone out there. We can also, I don't know if the, the 3D printer will, would go out in the shed. Yeah, I don't think so either. Finding a place in the building for a 3D printer becomes, becomes a little bit tricky, but you know, it's certainly something that we can, we can investigate. Yeah. So that's, that's my idea. And I think that we were talking about this in the context of bullet aid, which I mentioned in our last director's report, which is now available for the first time in two or three years. This is a legislative appropriation. Every member has some allotment that they can draw from for small projects throughout their district. And we've been very fortunate in the past that Senator Amador, when he was in office, got us several bullet aid grants for new computers for the, to finish the patio to renovate the, the back room. Those are the kinds of things that, that, that bullet aid is good for. But there are other grants, you know, small grants, the annual Stewart's Holiday Match Grant is, is always great. ACT is always great for small grants. Just on the back of a napkin, if we were, you know, just for the shed and maybe a little bit of retrofitting and a first day collection. I was thinking something between $5,000 and $6,000. But I don't know.
Joe, with the size of the shed, would it be something we need to get permitted for? Or are you talking about like one of those Rubbermaid-style sheds that are kind of big but not too big? Or are you talking about getting an actual wood shed? Do you know, like the size of it? Is that something we have to think about?
No, I, I guess we would have to think about the, the permitting.
If needed.
Yeah, yeah. It would, it would be a sort of permanent installation.
Hey, Joe, I know, and, oh, go ahead.
Oh, no, you can go ahead, Nellie. I can wait.
Okay. Okay. I know that, I know there's all kinds of rules with the bullet aid and, but I also do know that we, we have in our account $800 from the, you know, restrictive fund from the last bullet aid. Are we able to use that?
Oh, sure.
Now? I know. Yeah. So we do have that too, to just think about. Now? I know, yeah, so we do have that too, to just think about.
What I was thinking, and another way we might consider expanding our offerings, I don't know how many people on here are joined, Altamont and Gilderlin have a buy-nothing group now on Facebook. We might be able to do something inspired by that, where if someone has a piece of equipment that they'd be willing to loan out, but they don't necessarily want to donate it to the library, we could keep a running list of, oh, you need, you know, a power auger, or you need a bobcat, or you need a particular kind of lawnmower, or something like that. I know, I, I can put you in touch with someone who may be willing to loan it, and just invite people in the community to say, you know, tell us what you would be willing to loan out for, you know, for a couple of days, for a short period of time. And then the library could be sort of a clearinghouse for, we're not holding this equipment, but we can put you in touch with someone who may be able to make it available to you.
Cool.
I guess the only thing I would be, and we'd obviously have to figure this out, is the liability factor if somebody has a power tool and if it can cause damage to them or somebody gets injured. That, but we could figure out if, if other libraries have done something like that, just in case, you know, gosh forbid, somebody takes a power tool from us and this says, oh, well, it's the Altamont Libraries, so now who's, you know, who's responsible for my husband cutting off his hand or something like that? You know, that's the only thing that would hesitate me. I think we could roll this out in phases. Um, like, I love, I'm an avid vegetable gardener, and I love the idea of heirloom seeds, and I know last year, a lot of people did gardens, and maybe people saved their seeds like I have, and I think maybe that's one phase we could roll out, and then for all, like, all the creative people, like, Gilderlin does, what is it, Creative Bug, I think, or something like that? Um, they have a program they're doing, so then maybe that's another phase, and we do it so that it's not so overwhelming. Um, and that kind of buys us some time with figuring out that power tools, because I know they also do like, um, fishing rods, and you have Thompson's Lake right up the way, so I think it's a really great idea, it's just kind of airing out those kinks.
Yep, we, we, we do, we, we've got fishing rods. I, I fix them on an annual basis. We have four working ones right now. They go out about twice a year. But it always makes me happy when they do.
I, I think it's a really great opportunity, it's something we can offer.
Okay, um, cool. Well, you know, the, uh, one of the things that that I, I learned recently is that there was like $42 million set aside for bullet aid between the governor and the two houses of the legislature, and that gets divvied up between every member with the leadership having more than, more than anybody, but apparently most of that has been spoken for already, even before it was like enacted, like, these are just projects that they've had in their back pocket. Anyway, I'm gonna, I'm gonna write some letters. We had Senator Hinchi out last month, and I think that she would be a, you know, potentially a, a, a good avenue for this. Cool.
All right. Well, here's the thing, um, you know, what we can do is we, you know, like, like Amanda said, we can do this in phases, we can do this slowly, we can make this work, it makes sense, and we can cover all of our bases as we go along. So let's just, you know, give some more thought to it, and, um, and we can revisit this again at our next meeting. And, um, but I'll be the first to donate my, uh, my, 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 my post hole digger, so no one gets hurt with a post hole digger, okay? So there you go.
You know, and the, to, to Amanda's other point, I, I think that, you know, basically we just, you know, create a waiver for anybody who is using the, the tool library before they made their first, their bar, you know, before they borrowed, and then, you know, we would keep that on file. But I would check with our insurance company to see whether that's even a thing.
Since you're recording this meeting, you call before you dig. That's all you do, right?
Yes. Yeah, and, and, you know, the harm waiver, but also an age, you know, you don't want some 14 or 15-year-old kid coming in and looking to borrow, you know, the, uh, like a lawnmower or something without the permission of their parent. That'd be the only other thing, I just think, like. But, yeah, not-
Drone either, for that matter, but that's, that does make.
But again, we can start crafting those restrictions and, and roll out slowly, like, it doesn't take up a lot of room to have a seed library, so we could maybe start that one first and just see if people respond.
All right, cool. Okay, um, there's a, the last thing on our list is our talking point of the month. Is there one, Joe?
Well, I think that we've hit on a lot of big points in this, this meeting. So, you know, we've got, we've got a couple of banner headlines that we're going to browsing by with a bite by headcount, so, so come on in. You don't have to call ahead anymore. Just be willing to, to wait a minute if there's more than 10 people here. Concerts are coming back, that's a huge deal. Storytime is back every Tuesday at 10:30 in Orsini Park. And Saturday, we haven't even mentioned Saturdays, Saturday hours are coming back starting June 5th. So, um, you know, uh, uh, spring is busting out all over.
All right, very good. Can I get a motion to adjourn? Unless anybody else has anything else for the cause? Motion by Dick to adjourn. How did I know that was gonna happen? And seconded. Seconded from Debra, all in favor, of course, and, uh, everybody, thank you for spending this wonderful spring evening on Zoom or whatever we're on. Enjoy tomorrow, it's gonna be just as nice, and, uh, there we go.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks.
Thanks, Andy.